Other body that's on it.
Okay, roll call Miller.
Here.
Jack Moore.
Here.
Barber here, Hatley. Hatley?
No.
Conthern. Justin Conthern. There, you show him on.
I do show him on, he is muted. Justin?
Here, Mr. Barber.
Okay, Duffield.
Here.
Lanier. Smith?
Here.
Black? Call me Black.
Here.
Keller. Justin Keller. Present.
Okay. You got it all documented there Nathan?
I'm good, I'm ready to move.
Okay, guys, I'd like to welcome everybody to the April Planning Commission meeting and we appreciate your indulgence of doing this virtually. And I am just as techno ignorant as some others that I've talked to. So bear with us here if it doesn't go as smooth as silk, but I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting with the normal housekeeping item is the request review and approval of the minutes from our February meeting. We did not meet in March, but February 24th meeting minutes have been presented to you for your approval. What's your pleasure gentlemen?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Smith.
Let's go to you.
Luke.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Smith. Did I hear a second?
Let's go to you second.
Okay, Black seconded and a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the February meeting. All those in favor acknowledge by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried. And Nathan, if you at any time you want to, you don't hear enough ayes in there to suit you, then you just say the word and we'll stop and do a roll call when any votes you feel like we need to, okay?
Okay, I will and.
Okay, second order business here is the request to review and approve the application for memorandum of understanding which would allow parking in the right of way along South Utica Avenue for property located at 1900 East Main Street. Submitted by Garnet Engineering on behalf of Cogswell Ford Lincoln. Sarah, you have a staff report on that?
Yes, sir. So similar to my last report at the Board of Adjustments, Cogswell Motors is currently undergoing a renovation and their rehabilitation to the site is an estimated project value of 3.5 million. And they are wishing to enter into the special use permit for memorandum of understanding, which is a license and land application. And I believe based on some research I've done through our legal department, items such as these have certain conditions that are placed on them. And I have that included in the staff report. They say a license is assignable only for the use of parking within the right of way. The licensee shall not gain an interest in the land by granting of this license. Future improvements to the right of way that includes sidewalks may require licensee to abstain from using land that is that this agreement may cover. The licensee agrees that any expenditures of the licensee within the public right of way shall not be performed on the reliance of this license. The license agrees that there are not any interests in the land to be coupled with this license. The licensee shall not expand any more development within the public right of way than what is already presented as part of this application. The license is revocable at any time and the licensee understands and agrees that any improvement on the property owned by the city and covered by the licensee shall be solely at the owner's expense and not shall be and shall not be reimbursable by the city. The applicant is requesting formal approval of the area along South Utica to be utilized for onsite, not on street, onsite parking for 35 parking spaces. The area is paved and historically they have used that area to park cars sporadically throughout the years in this area. It is staff's recommendation that we forward the special use permit to City Council for approval with the eight conditions listed in the comments that I read to you along with the requirement that vehicles be allowed no closer than two feet behind the curb with striping provided. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Sarah. Is Mr. Williams back on with us for this meeting as well?
Yes, I'm here.
Vernon, if you have anything to add to that?
No, only that the staff, the staff has went over all these requirements with me and the owner in detail and we understand them and we agree to it.
Okay.
I'd answer any questions you guys have.
Gentlemen, if you have any questions, this is Vernon Williams, he's the engineer with Garnet Engineering that's working with Cogswell. So if anybody has any questions for him, just. No, okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Williams.
You're welcome.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions, comments about this at all? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, this is Luke Duffield, just so I'm clear on it, staff and the engineering group for Cogswell are in agreement on what's presented before us to approve. Okay, and I'll make the motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Duffield, do I hear a second?
This is Don, I'll second it.
Okay, all right, Don, Jack Moore seconded that, you got that Nathan?
Got it.
All right, all those in favor acknowledge by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried.
And that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That was with the existing conditions, wasn't it Luke?
Yes, as presented.
Okay, thank you, I've got.
All right, okay, moving on. Request review and recommendation for approval for a special use permit to allow shipping, receiving and storage for property located at 3324 Bernice Avenue in a C2. This is submitted by Denise Frazier at BWI on behalf of Omega Solutions. Sarah, you got a staff report on that?
Yes, before I give that staff report, if you're not muted right now, there's a little bit of feedback and it would be nice if you could mute yourself. It said, thank you on that, this application is by Omega Solutions. It was recommended when they did their large scale application to go through the special use permit process since they did not previously have one. This company has been in this location for quite a while and we're just trying to ensure that they have all the right permits in place for their application. So it is a manufacturing facility and they are proposing to continue its current use. And it is in a C2 zone, which would typically include restaurants, hotels, churches. However, this is also located in the Arkansas River Industrial Zone where you would include to expect light manufacturing. And you will note that there are other similar uses along Bernice Avenue, auto salvage, auto repair shops, along with facilities, premium protein facilities and a natural gas distribution center. The table of permitted uses does state that steel products fabrication and assembly is a special use within the C2 zone. Since it is in a C2 zone, staff is recommending that we forward this approval for a special use permit to City Council for their approval.
Okay, all right, is Denise Frazier on or anybody from BWI on with us tonight? Or Omega Solutions? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding this request?
I have one, this is Larry. Sarah, does this have to have a paved parking lot back there? I noticed in the pictures it was SB2 wasn't paved, does it require being paved?
So what we did with the large scale permit is we had said that if the corrections that we had made to the zoning code to allow like the gravel storage areas, that this would meet that requirement there and not need to pave that back area. And so since we have passed that no, we do not need to require that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just got a, Sarah, I just to interrupt just for a minute, I did get a text from Jim Lanier, I guess he's having some. He needs to, we might need to contact him on how to get on, he said he hasn't heard anything, have we emailed him the invite and all that?
Yes, sir, but I will email him right now, if you would go ahead and tell him I am emailing him a new link.
Okay, come on it.
I just sent that.
Okay, all righty, commissioners, what's your pleasure on the, do you have any questions, comments or anything regarding this? This request?
Mr. Chairman, this is Luke Duffield, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Luke, all right, we have a motion to approve the request, do I hear a second?
I'll second it, this is Larry.
Larry Smith seconded it, so we have a motion and a second to approve this request. All those in favor of this acknowledge by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carry. Okay, all right. Okay, item number four, we have a request to update Article Number 13, Table of Permitted Uses to regard in regard to funeral home service crematorium. Sarah, you've got a report on that one?
Yes, sir, so this is just an update to our table of permitted uses in the zone code. This does not have an application attached to it. What we have found in hearing of an application that is coming forth, that crematorium is actually not listed in our table of permitted uses. So we are, as a result of it not being listed, it outright then states that uses not specifically listed are not permitted. We didn't want to outright say they're not permitted, we did want to provide an avenue for them to potentially obtain a permit. And so what we are doing is requesting to add a line item to the table of permitted uses for funeral home services crematorium. This is not permitted in residential areas. You will see that it is permitted in agricultural or industrial areas. And in C2, C3 and C5 zones, it would require a special use permit. Otherwise, it's not permitted within the city. So there's just a few zones that we actually believe that it could be something that is either outright permitted or is a special use permit. And so we are requesting that you would forward this application to City Council for their approval.
Okay, thank you Sarah. Well, guys, this is pretty open and shut, what's your pleasure on this one? This request? Yeah, does anybody have any questions, comments?
I'm not seeing any hands listed or raised to ask any questions.
Okay.
There's a couple, there's a number I'm not entirely sure. The rest of them I believe are here to talk on agenda item five, the next one. Kelly. Regina Watkins, are you here to speak on? Agenda item five?
I wasn't really going to speak, I just was gonna listen to kind of see what happened.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think that there's any public comment on this.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, thank you Sarah.
Yes, sir.
The, all right, commissioners, what's your pleasure on item number four?
This is Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Don. Go ahead, Don.
I just want, if we make a motion to put this in the City Council's hand, will it come back to us? Or is that? What's the ruling on that?
My opinion is that they have to do this three times before they can make it forward to actually become a rule. Is that providing a lot of feedback for you guys?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It was, it's better now.
Okay. My opinion is that they have to hear this three times before it becomes a rule. We do have an application that may get submitted once this goes through the process, but at this time, this is just an update to the table of permitted uses. I don't know that there's much objection to it. I don't think that this would come back to you, but it is City Council, so I'm not going to speak on their behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is Cody, I would make a motion moving forward.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Black and a second from Commissioner Smith to move this, go ahead and to approve this request, moving forward. All those in favor of this acknowledge by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carry. Okay, all right. What you've all been waiting for is item number five, a lot of you have anyway. Item number five is a request review recommendation for a special use permit to allow the ensueance of the tower use permit. Tower use permit for a 100 foot monopole, it's commercial communication tower located at 634 West 5th Street in an R3. Submitted by Selco Partnership DPA Verizon Wireless on behalf of the owner, Bridge Church. Sarah, go ahead and give us a staff report on that one.
Yes, sir, so this is an application that was submitted on April 3rd to construct 100 foot monopole commercial communication tower in an R3 zone adjacent to James School Park. This property is located in Glenwood neighborhood and within this district, you see a mixture of residential from single family to small apartment type uses. Along with secondary uses such as city parks, Russellville intermediate and middle school campus, churches and the best barns for the school districts. The proposal is to allow construction of 100 foot tall commercial communication tower at the intersection of West 5th Street and South Houston Place. According to the table of permitted uses, it's permissible only through a special use permit. The application has submitted elevations that show how the existing structure will look, including details showing a proposed six foot chain link fence. Additionally, they have provided a thorough compliance statement outlining how they meet all the requirements as listed in Article 3.18. They have shown how they do not have another option for a different pole to either co-locate it or construct it at another location. And they have shown how it is a necessary construction to help with their service. The staff does have the following requirements or comments. A certificate of compliance with the National Environmental Protection Act will be required to any permits can be issued. Acknowledged and agreed is not sufficient. And recent updates proposed to the zone code include requirements for vehicle storage yards to include side obscuring fences. And although it's not a side obscuring fence, due to the proximity of the park, a side obscuring fence is recommended. So staff's recommendation is that we do forward this to City Council for the approval with the condition the applicant provided the letter of compliance with the NEPA and a side obscuring fence. However, I do want to provide just a little bit more information. I did note that the application date was April 3rd and by our code, we have 90 days to make a determination to either approve or deny. If we deny, we do have to deny it in writing and stating the reasons why we deny that. And based on federal code, Trey might be able to weigh in on the timeline, it might have been changed to 60 days on that. And then additionally, I did receive a petition today showing that there's approximately 159 unverified signatures in opposition to the special use permit for the cell tower. And so I will leave you with that, I do have the two requirements that staff is recommending.
Thank you Sarah, thanks a lot, I appreciate it. All right. I've gotten a lot of emails on this one myself and I've even spoke to some people on the phone about this one. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm going to just, I'm gonna chime in my two cents worth and then I'm gonna leave it up to the commissioners to, you know, to do what you guys do best. But I do feel like that I've had a lot of concern from people about the, about the meeting, about the virtual meeting, not getting the proper, you know, about the commission not getting or the city not getting the proper verbiage or the proper, you know, getting that, getting their point over to their argument to, you know, the city in a way that they were good about. And I know that this Corona thing has been uncomfortable on a lot of people and I feel like that if we were to, you know, force this forward, I'm just giving you my opinion guys, if we were to force this forward, then it would, you know, I've had a lot of opposition against us moving this forward for the reason of not having it in the chambers and not having, you know, people that are, you know, look us right in the face and tell us what their concerns are. Now, we'll move forward at your pleasure, but if we, you know, if you choose to go ahead and move this forward, we can, but I wanted to just voice, you know, I wouldn't be doing my due diligence through this virtual type meeting if I didn't, if I didn't share with you guys, you know, the phone calls, the emails that I've gotten and the concerns about the lack of being able to plead their case to person, you know. And I know that we've got several people online to speak tonight, I'm not trying to jump in front of you by any means, but I'm just, I'm letting you know that I've heard what you've said and I agree with you. And so that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it back over, you know, just commissioners, if you have any questions or.
Wendell?
Yes.
We haven't given the applicant an opportunity to speak.
That's, yeah, I know, that's what I was about to say.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, is there anybody from Selco Partnership or Verizon online tonight?
Yes, thank you, this is Ralph Weingarten from Falken Foster at 678 Front Avenue Northwest, Suite 215, Grand Rapids, Michigan, 49504. And I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless and Bridge Church. I guess before I launch into a full, long presentation, I would say initially, if it's the feeling that this would be better handled at a future date where people could be in person, we don't have an objection to that. We would be willing to postpone that to a later date if need, if that's the feeling of the commission. So I don't know if you want to address that first or if you want me to just go ahead and give my full presentation, I guess I'll leave that up to you. But we don't object if that, if you feel like this would be better in person.
I'm, this is Chairman Miller again, I'm, the only reason that I brought those feelings forward, I have spoken to people with the city today and I don't feel like I'm out of line when I say that if they choose to table this until we can get some, you know, get some, some personal feedback from the people. They don't feel like they can, you know, be heard or whatever. I don't want to feel like we're trying to shove something down my throat, I know how I would feel if this was, if this was my backyard, but. I'm gonna, commissioners, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it to you, I mean, with any questions you have and whatever, and then we can, then we can proceed, however. It's, this is kind of a touchy one, I guess, it's, how we proceed is really gonna depend on. I'm just gonna give you my opinion here, guys, I really personally think we ought to table this until we can look at the applicants in the face and tell them why we are going to try to put a cellphone tower in their backyard. And these petitions here, the one, the person I talked to today told me that those names that they had weren't even the ones near the cellphone tower itself, I'm sure that there's gonna be, and I'm just, you know, I know how, some of these addresses on this petition that I've heard is, are, you know, a quarter mile away and the people even next to it have not even been asked about it. If we choose to table this, I mean, that's, that's something that I would be all for, but commissioners, I'm gonna leave it up to you, if you guys choose to do that, go right ahead, I'm just letting you know what I had heard and I think I'm speaking from the heartbeat of the city and the people from the city here is that if we do table this, I don't think we're gonna have any opposition, you know, up the chain, so. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
This is Don, I've had the same feedback as you have Wendell and I make a motion to table it to May's meeting and that way hopefully we can be back to normal and we can get the citizens face to face meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that, Don, and so we do have a motion to table, request for item five, the request for the special permit. Do you have a request by Mr. Jack Moore, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Smith has seconded that, I know there's a lot of people on here that were, you know, due to speak or whatever, but I believe enough voices were heard. And Don and Larry, I thank y'all for chiming in and we have a motion and a second to table this till next month. Favor acknowledged by saying aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carry, all right. Okay, Sarah, if you would, if you would, just go ahead and whoever had contacted you or whoever was on your list to speak or whatever, tell them that, you know, I mean, just get with them and tell them that they'll be able to speak in person next month, hopefully, so.
Wendell, they are all on this call right now, they're watching this, so they have just heard that they can be there for the May meeting. Nathan Barber, Jim Lanier is now on the meeting.
Okay.
That was my, that was my question, sir, do you still show Hatley as being absent?
At this point, yes, she's been trying to get on and she has not sent me another message. She's been trying to get on, and she has not sent me another message or call.
Jim, were you on that vote? Jim Lanier?
He's still muted. Jim, you're gonna have to click the unmute button.
That will answer the question whether he voted or not, I think.
I, I think he was trying to vote. You're still muted. Can you give me a thumbs up for a thumbs down? He gave me a thumbs up for voting on that.
That's all I need. Thank you.
Sarah, I do not envy you right now at all. Okay. All right. Okay.
One second. I'm gonna respond to a question that we just received. The May meeting, the May meeting for Planning Commission is 5:30 on May 25th at City Hall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving right along here, guys. Item number six. We've got a request to approve vacating that portion of South Waterloo Avenue adjacent to Blocks 32 and 33 of the Pointer Edition, City of Russellville, corner of East Fourth and South Waterloo Avenue, submitted by Dave Garza, Barrett Associates, on behalf of AmeriCol Logistics LLC, Christopher Bestelfelt, and Sean Partain. Dave, or I mean, Sarah, do you have a staff report on that?
Yes. I just had someone join the meeting. The application for the cell tower was tabled to the May 25th meeting at 5:30 PM, just to let you know on that. Okay, so this is the staff report for the vacation of right-of-way at Waterloo and East Fourth Street. These are both unopened sections of right-of-way. And when this was originally platted, it was platted most likely as residential development. There are several comments in here regarding the comprehensive 2020 plan, how it's supposed to meet land use development objectives. This is in the airport industrial district and an expansion of an existing facility. I'm sorry. Let me start that over.
Start over, Sarah.
And the land is already located in the airport industrial district, is an expansion of an existing facility, and is not hindered in height due to proximity of the airport, although they will be applying for and obtaining an FAA approval for their project. And that meets the goal to guide development into locations where the land is most cost-effectively served by urban land services. Since this facility is already existing there and it's just an expansion, this is the most cost-effectively served, I don't foresee as developing areas in the airport industrial district, industrial district as residential homes. The, another goal that you're supposed to try and meet in the comprehensive plan is to develop new and maintain existing traffic circulation. We actually talked about traffic circulation with the applicant, and they may use the portion of Waterloo that is not abandoned to move traffic from their project over towards Second Street in, at some future point. So circulation through the property is still going to be permissible. And so I believe that that is not an issue, because we're not extending, we're actually removing two unopened right-of-ways. So the highest and best use of this property is not for the construction of residential property as originally platted. It has to best use is to allow this development to expand. And if that means not opening right-of-way and actually vacating it, that is something after conversations that staff can be behind and support. In the Maria Mountain, Russellville 2040 comprehensive plan that is currently in draft form, it encourages the same items, and it has a more comprehensive plan for future street locations. And it includes a connecting Weir Road to Elmira. That location, in previous discussions, had been proposed for this location potentially down Waterloo or South Verona in that area. We have actually been able to, in conversations with local residents, engineering, and a city counselor have actually discussed and come up with a solution that would better serve a connection from north to south, helping to create a Weir Road extension to Elmira, just in a different location. And so at this point, that does not seem to be an issue why we would not open, or why we would not permit the vacation of this right-of-way. Public Works Engineering did have some comments, drainage easements at the old alignment of Fourth and Waterloo, road improvements along Waterloo if using that for truck access, and drainage easements along the north side of existing and/or diverted drainage to Fourth Street. So it is staff's recommendation that we forward this to city council for their consideration and approval, along with the requirements for drainage and road improvements, meaning public works approval as noted in their comments.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Dave, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure. The, we've talked with the staff. We've had several meetings in AmeriCol as well. And I think everybody is in agreement to go ahead and close these two streets. As Sarah said, there's never been anything there. If you remember historically, Second Street was actually Main Street until they built the overpass. Then they moved Main Street to where it's at now. So with Main Street there, on Second Street, of course, this area used to have a lot of light manufacturing. When you go through there, you can see it. You see all the manufacturing and the scrap metal, just different businesses, commercial businesses in that respect. But as far as the drainage easement on Fourth Street that we're wanting to close, it's actually going to be a drainage connection. We have to take the water that is coming from the east and take it over to Verona. So being a drainage easement there, it's not a problem because it's a ditch. That's the proposal anyway. And then we're looking at making improvements to the drainage ditch that's going down Verona towards the railroad track. And the site itself will also have detention ponds to take all of its surface drainage to the detention pond. And we've been, we've been in contact and been talking with Glenn about that as well. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
All right. Thanks. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Dave? Do you have any comments, questions about this request? Okay, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
This is Cody. I would make a motion to approve the vacation of South Waterloo, adjacent to Blocks 32 and 33.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Black. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that. Luke Duffield.
Duffield second. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve this request. All those in favor, acknowledge by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay. All right. Item number seven. We have a request to review and approve the large-scale development at the AmeriCol Russellville plant on South Elmira. The expansion will be a high bay automation storage system, submitted by Dave Garza and Barrett Associates on behalf of AmeriCol Logistics LLC. Sarah, you have anything on that?
Yes, sir. So this is an application for an addition of 108,670 square foot building with a building height of approximately 155 feet tall. The existing structure is currently 245,300 square feet. It does sit along the railroad tracks off of Elmira and, and is in an M1 and M2, light industrial and heavy industrial zone.
You seem a little distracted. Are you okay, Sarah?
Yes, I'm sorry. I had to admit someone to the meeting.
Okay.
And so I'm trying to do two things at once. So I apologize.
It's all right. No.
This is required through large-scale development because of the size of the building and the size of the property, I believe, also exceeds the five acres. But, but the sheer fact of the size of the building requires large-scale development. It does meet all of the 25-foot setbacks. I do believe that you saw or had access to the video, and the applicant is going to share that, yes, Dave, or did you want me to?
Sure.
Okay. I'll, I'll share a video here in a second. And so the sidewalks are in the airport industrial, sidewalks in the airport industrial district character area along Elmira are not required because that is a correction to the code that we passed and city council has affirmed and approved. I do want to make sure that the applicant is aware that any signs or new signage that they propose will have to go through a signed permit, application and review. Drainage easements, as we mentioned in the previous public hearing, will be required and any public improvements made will require additional improvements, approvals. So it is staff's recommendation to approve the large-scale development submitted. And I will go ahead and share my screen here to show you the video. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That is a time-lapse video showing the construction of the facility. So again, that is the end of my staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Dave, do you have anything to add to the, to the video or...
I think at this time, I'd like to defer to Mark. Mark, are you there?
I am, David. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Is that your name?
My name is Mark Auer, A-U-E-R, Director of Program Management with AmeriCol.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Chairman Miller, I appreciate the opportunity to address you folks this evening. Respectfully, we have a rather large project and an expansion that we'd like to pursue in the Russellville area. It's an expansion of the existing property that we own, and this is for the benefit of making sure that the food supply chain stays intact and we can continue to get food to, to the good people of, of the Midwest and the Southwest. And obviously, you realize we're located very close to ConAgra facility, which will be storing a good bit of ConAgra products, products as we get it, get the products to the marketplace. This automated storage and, storage and retrieval system center will, will bring approximately 70 high-quality jobs to the Russellville area, technical jobs, as well as some forklift operator jobs to load the product at the, to receive and load the product at the distribution facility. And we're looking forward to the project should we receive blessing from you folks.
All right. All right. Thank you, sir. And Dave, if you deferred to him, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if my commissioners have any, have any questions for either one of you or comment.
I'm gonna add a few things if I can.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. So this is like, it's, this has been a kind of a long-range plan for them with ConAgra. ConAgra, of course, we've worked on Bernice Avenue or Bernard Avenue and improving that, opening a gate on the west side of the plant so that they can get the product back and forth. And so now with the expansion, especially since, since we've had this pandemic, I mean, they, I believe they've been working 24/7 to provide meals. So it's, we needed this project probably about two years ago. And, but there is some study going on right now with Elmira to possibly build an overpass over the railroad. Currently, there are some traffic problems when the train goes through there. So that's gonna be an added feature at that location. But one of the things I wanted to talk about, and Sarah and I talked about this, she actually kind of brought it up at the meeting that we had, is with the technology that we have today, there are so many things going on. We're using more and more video like we are today. Well, there's also video projection. I mean, churches are using it. You're beginning to see billboards out there on the interstate that are now not just paper or plastic, but now they're videos and they change. And with this building and its height, we talked about, you know, why couldn't you do a projection? And you could do advertisement or announcements, you know, huge. Think about it, Christmas time, you know, a big Christmas tree or, you know, just shine up there, you know, with lights and different things to make it really look nice. So those are some of the options that you could do with this building as large as it is. Announcements for city events that we might have throughout the year, just different things like that. So it lends itself to that capability in the future. And so I just think it's, it's, it's a good project. I think the city needs this project, especially with the economic impact that it's gonna bring to this city. And, and we're, and AmeriCol is doing everything that they can to, to meet all the requirements that the city has. So they're being good partners. I'm done.
Okay. All right. All right, commissioners, what's your, what's your pleasure here? And don't tell me...
I'm going to approve.
...on top of this building either. I don't want to hear it. Let's be serious here. Let's, what's your pleasure on this, guys?
I'll make a motion to approve. Luke Duffield.
Okay. All right. Duffield made a motion to approve the request.
This is Don. I'll second that.
Okay. We got a second by Mr. Jackmore. All right. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of this request, acknowledge by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And I want to thank... All right. And I want to thank everybody that's on with us tonight, and we, we appreciate your patience as we, you know, we've got through our first virtual meeting here. Sarah, do you have any suggestions? I mean, if we have to proceed this way again, I mean, do you have any comments for anybody? Or, I mean, can we do anything different? Or will you just address those as you need to?
I think we will address those as we need to because I think by God's grace, we are gonna be back in person next month. I did hear comments from people who cannot normally attend meetings. We were at least trying to do a virtual meeting because it gave them the opportunity to participate. However, I think Nathan Barber was trying to say something to you, Wendell.
Okay. Nathan, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm good.
You're good?
Sorry.
All right. No, that's okay. No, I mean, I never, I never really looked at it from that angle. I looked at this as, as, you know, the virtual part of it being a, kind of a hindrance than more than a help. But I never looked at it as being helping someone that couldn't make a meeting. But if we, if we do have anybody like that that has an issue they'd like to present, if, if we go back to our regular, you know, scheduled meetings, then we need to make sure that they are heard, whether it be through video or through whatever. I mean, but we'll work on that too, won't we, Sarah?
Yes, sir. I just got a message from Ms. Hatley that she's still been trying to get into the meeting. And so I'll message her back.
That we're, okay. Well, all right. Well, if there's no other business, then we are adjourned. And we'll hopefully see you guys next month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.